Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
All Board members are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first part of our meeting this evening is our presentation portion, and tonight, we are excited to recognize the Music Department at Carmel Middle School for receiving the 2023-2024 Indiana State School Music Association All-Music Award. Good evening. I'm Deanna Pittman, Principal at Carmel Middle School. The Indiana State School All-Music Award is presented to middle and high school music programs that meet a specific and rigorous performance criteria throughout the school year. The criteria that must be met includes students from the school performing and earning a gold rating on a level solo, students from the school performing and earning a gold rating on a level ensemble, at least one concert band performing and earning earning a gold rating on a level performance at the organizational contest, and at least one jazz band performing and earning a gold rating on a level performance at an organizational contest. We are happy to report that the 325 band students in grades six through eight at Carmel Middle School not only met this criteria for the 2023-24 school year, but they exceeded these expectations as well. We are so proud of the efforts of all of our band students and their directors. We also want to thank the Board and CCS Administration for all their support of the fine arts in our district. Please join me in recognizing and congratulating our band directors, Mrs. Becky McLehanen and Mr. Ben Maynard. We will now move on to public comment. Per our Board bylaw, speakers are typically placed in Group One and Group Two. This evening, we only have public comments from people in Group One who are CCS students, CCS parents' guardians, employees, and Carmel residents. The order of speakers is determined by our random drawing, our fancy bingo balls. As a reminder, participants must be recognized first by the Presiding Officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if applicable. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the Board. No person may address or question individual school board members. The Board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under consideration. So the numbers have been placed the numbers have been placed in the basket, and Dr. Ostrom will call out two numbers at a time. The first person is the person up to speak, and the second is the person on deck. When your name is called, please go to the microphone and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. We will have a timer up there at the podium. There'll be a green light, and it'll make a beep sound when you have about 30 seconds left, and it'll turn red when you're done. We have 30 minutes for public comment altogether, and the countdown time will be up there on the screen. Thank you for participating this evening. Dr. Ostrom, we'll get started.
First number is two, followed by four.
Okay, first up, we have Mahitha I can't read her last name. She knows who she is. And then on deck is Kirsten Kolewski.
Hi, y'all. I'm Mahitha Conjady, and I'm a Carmel High School student, and I'm going to be doing a public comment about the new policy about censoring books within our school district. I just want to start by saying that I love Carmel High Schools. This school district has provided me with more opportunities and tools for success than I could have ever imagined moving here in second grade. The school system and all of the views that's impassioned in me are the reason I get to stand here before you confident and proud to express the views that I have learned throughout my time at the school district. When I first heard about the attempts by administrators to start censoring books in the district, I was shocked. It's crazy to me how the school district I love so much and has been so successful could even tolerate the idea of suppressing the freedom of education. Not to mention that the books that they want to take out of English curriculums are the ones that students love the most. I'm sure anyone can guess how hard it is to get high school freshmen to talk about books outside of English class. But a lot of these books on the chopping block today have accomplished just that. They did that because these books were raw, and they expressed a reality that most of us are shielded from in a community like Carmel. Kids have probably never experienced homelessness the way it was depicted in The Glass Castle, racism the way it was in To Kill a Mockingbird, female subjugation the way it was portrayed in A Thousand Splendid Suns. All of these books are critically acclaimed, but for some reason, this incredibly impressive school wants to make them inaccessible. Why is that? It's because certain people believe not educating kids about the issues of the world will protect them. But in actuality, it does the opposite. It exerts willful ignorance upon them and silences their questions regarding the unjust systems present in this world. Meaningful change can only occur when people, especially young people, recognize problems in this world and try to solve them. Never teaching them about the problems in the first place doesn't create any progress, but rather perpetuates the problems of the status quo. In Carmel, we talk a lot about how when injustices occur, you should never be a bystander or turn a blind eye. But what are we supposed to do when our own administrators are forcibly closing our eyes to the injustices of the world? I want to conclude the speech by reminding all of you that you have the power of the education of the next generation of leaders in your hands. And I can only urge you I can only urge you to not let that responsibility slip through your fingers. Thank you.
On deck is number six.
On deck is Michelle Oha.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Kovalevsky. I am a parent of one recent Carmel High School graduate and one high school senior at Carmel High School. I am here tonight to speak in opposition of changing the book review policy to be more restrictive. Today, new information came to light. A new survey came out by the nonpartisan Knight Foundation, which took a national sample of adults on their attitudes towards book banning in schools. I'd like to share with you some information about that. The strong opponents of restricting books in schools outnumber the supporters three to one. More people are against restricting access than are worried about students having access to inappropriate materials. Just 7% of the K-12 parents who answered this survey mentioned that their child had accessed what they considered an inappropriate book. 72% of the respondents think books mentioning or depicting sexual intercourse should be available to high schoolers if they're selected by educators, even if some community members object. 52% say the same about middle school. 78% of adults are confident that schools select appropriate books. Two-thirds think teachers and librarians should have a say in what books are accessible, while only 2 in 10 think that community members who are not pre-K-12 parents or government officials should have a say. In short, most adults think that it's more important for kids to have access to a wide variety of books than to restrict inappropriate books, which students rarely find. They are confident in the schools and their professional educators and librarians, and trust them to choose materials even on difficult topics. They don't think outsiders and government officials should be making those decisions. We need to trust the teachers and librarians and the kids to make the decisions about their reading materials and what is right for them.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Oha, and on deck-
Number three.
On deck is Catherine Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Oja. Can you hear me? I feel like, okay. And I am a Carmel resident and the mother of a future Greyhound. I am speaking this evening as the mother of a future Greyhound and as a former English teacher. When I used to live in Virginia, I was on the group of teachers who would vet books for the school district that I worked at in the time. And I've reviewed the policies and procedures that are used for educators here in Carmel Clay, and it's a far more restrictive process than what I experienced in Virginia. We have a really robust and transparent policy already in place where parents who have concerns about the materials that their children are reading can use if they don't want their child to read that particular book. There's a text in ninth grade that is a memoir, and I have several friends who don't want their child to read the book. They've gone to their child's English teacher and said, "Hey, I don't want my child to read this book." And the child has not read the book. They've read an alternative book. The system already works. It's already in place. Or they've gotten a copy of the book. They've read it, and they've worked with their child to either black out the parts that they didn't feel was appropriate for their child to read or have meaningful conversations about, "Hey, this is what you're going to be talking about in class today," and worked through it as a family. Let families work through it using the process that's already in place. Don't change what's not broken.
Thank you. Up next is Catherine Robinson, and on deck-
Number five.
On deck is Richard Gregory.
Hello. My name is Catherine Robinson, and I'm a student at Carmel High School. And I think as a senior at Carmel, I believe it's very important that all of you hear what Carmel High School students actually think about the new book banning policy. I think it is incredibly important for us in our formative years to have access to information so we're able to make informed decisions. And if you try to limit our information, you are hindering our ability to grow and change in the future. School is a place for learning and growth, and this policy would be infringing on our rights as students to be educated to the fullest extent possible. It is incredibly disappointing that under the guise of protecting your children, you are taking away such valuable resources as books mentioned prior. These books are classics for a reason. They have been recognized as incredibly important in young children to truly understand these heavy topics, such as racism and sexual assault. You aren't protecting us when we are already exposed to racism and sexually explicit content in our daily lives. You are just taking away our ability to learn why this happens and how we can prevent it later in life. Books like To Kill a Mockingbird with sexually explicit and racist content are incredibly important for our children to read because we are able to learn about what American history has happened in the past and how we can prevent it from happening in the future. By implementing this policy, you are making us incredibly ignorant to what racism and sexual assault really is and opening up the door for us to commit these atrocities in the future. I would just like you to question yourself when you make this decision. Where will you draw the line? How many books will we be taking away before we really stop? How much information are we going to be taking from our children before we say enough is enough? I think it is incredibly sad that a school board is even considering such implementations when you are the people who are assigned to protect our rights to education. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Richard Gregory, and on deck is Cole Dangler.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Richard Gregory. I'm going to speak on a different topic. I'm going to speak on the superintendent hiring process. I've lived in Carmel for 33 years, and we have had my wife and I have had three children get educated, well-educated, in the Carmel Clay school system. I recently retired from a very active teaching and research and administrative position at Indiana University after 33 years. Carmel Clay School Superintendent, the Carmel Clay Superintendent, announced recently that he will retire at the end of the 2024 academic year. The superintendent announced that his successor will be the Assistant Superintendent, who has been at CCS since 2020. It's unclear how this decision was made. The CCS School Board interviewed the Assistant Superintendent and subsequently approved this appointment. However, most human relation department policies at academic institutions, such as IU and many other institutions and companies, require at least three candidates to be interviewed before an appointment is made. As a matter of fact, the CCS School Board policy states that a broad-based search must be done for the superintendent position. This allows for a fair, unbiased selection of such a high-profile appointment. The School Board only considered a single candidate and did not conduct a broad-based search for this high-powered position. The School Board was not involved in the selection process, contrary to their own rules. The School Board just rubber-stamped the approval or the selection made by the CCS Administration. Even if the Assistant Superintendent is the best individual for the job, it is only fair that others be considered. My first question is, is why was this allowed to happen without a broad national search? My second question is, why announce the new superintendent a year in advance? Was it to avoid any new CCS School Board candidates from having input into this decision? Thank you.
Up next is Cole Dangler.
Hello. My name is Cole Dangler, and my remarks today are actually from my friend, Ally Swearingen. So these are all hers. She did the great work of getting all of these wonderful students in your building today. So these are her words, and I'm just going to deliver them to you. Good afternoon. Recently, there's been a debate on censoring books in our library and changing the system by which they are allowed into the collection. Books that are said to be too controversial, too divisive, and too uncomfortable. I ask you, is it the duty of a school to shelter its students from discomfort or to prepare them for the world as it is? In all its complexity and diversity. Recently, it was suggested that parental permission should be required before students could access certain books, claiming to protect children from what is deemed inappropriate or harmful. But let's be honest. Do we really need this kind of protection? Did we ask for it? The reality is that this policy isn't about safeguarding us. It's about controlling the narratives we are allowed to explore. By imposing these restrictions, we aren't shielding us from content. They are censoring the very history of the children they claim to protect. When we censor books, we are not just removing pages from a library. We are erasing lives, experiences, and histories. For many students, these books are more than stories. They are mirrors reflecting their own lives, their struggles, and their dreams. What's more, the policy's vague wording around graphic sexual content leads too much open to personal interpretation. What is graphic to one person might not be the same to another. The subjectivity can easily extend beyond just sexual content, creeping into the realm of history, culture, and identity. This isn't just about protecting our children from explicit material. It's about limiting their understanding of the world, stifling their ability to learn from history, and ultimately silencing the voices of those who have already been overlooked for far too long. We don't need protection from the truth. We need access to it. We cannot afford to censor our past because in doing so, we condemn our future. When we remove books that represent communities, we are telling these students that their lives, their histories, and their struggles are somehow less valid, less important, and less worthy of recognition. Let me be clear. Our students deserve better. They deserve to see themselves in books they read to know that they are not alone. We are a diverse community, and our library should reflect that diversity. We owe it to our students to provide them with the full range of history, not just the parts that make us comfortable. Let us not be afraid of the truth, but embrace it. For in the end, it is only by acknowledging the past in all its forms that we can hope to build a future that's truly just and inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. We really appreciate you participating, especially the students. Thank you. Next on our agenda is consent. And tonight, our consent includes our Personnel Report, Claims, Payroll, Gift Applications, the July 8, 2024 Special Session Minutes, and the July 22, 2024 Regular Session Minutes. And as a reminder, when we talk about our consent agenda or this consent part of the agenda, this is typically the business part of the agenda, one of the big reasons why the Board is here. So that these are things we have to approve. Like I said, the payroll claims and other items that have to be approved as part of the business of the day-to-day school activities. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. May I have a second? Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion? We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Next, we will move on to our action items. These action items are Action Items 5.1 through 5.5, and these are change orders for several different projects, including the Elementary 2024 Paving Improvements, Carmel High School Football Stadium South Support Building, the Carmel Life and Learning Center Interior Finishes, the West Clay Elementary Playground Renovations, and the Carmel High School Synthetic Turf Replacement. At this time, I recommend we vote on these five change orders as a group. May I have a motion to vote on the change orders as a group?
I make a motion to take Change Orders 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5 together.
Thank you. May I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Mr. McMichael, would you be able to explain the 5.1 through 5.5 for us?
Yes. The first change order is identified as Elementary 2024 Paving. These are all change orders that and that project, for example, included paving at the Shelburne Road site, which, as you know, includes two elementary schools, a middle school, and also our second transportation facility. So the original project included all the schools, did not include the transportation facility. But after we received the bids, they were below the estimates, and so we have sufficient funds to also pave the transportation area. And that's so and we do have sufficient funds for all these change orders, of course, within the budget that we have. And so that identifies that change order. The second one is identified as Carmel Football South Support Building. And if you may have noticed, there's a new building there that becomes kind of the entry into the entire facility. And in the course of doing some of the work up there besides that building, we needed to there were ADA ramps installed on the sidewalk on the south end of the property, which created an issue where we had to add paving to bring, basically, to bring the drive up to the level of the new ramps. And so that's a part of this change order. And the other part has to do with wayfinding signs at the stadium. And so the third change order is a very small deduct change order, which is what we call a closeout change order. It's that project is finished, and this is remaining in allowance that was in this contractor's contract. And then the final change order is identified as Carmel High School Turf, but it's actually it is turf, but it's turf in a batting cage at Clay Middle School, actually, that there was vandalism. And so the turf in that batting cage was ruined. And so this is a very small project compared to the turf at the high school. And so that reflects what that change order is about.
May I have a motion to approve Action Items 5.1 through 5.5?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie and Louise. Any discussion? Right, seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda is our discussion item, and it's the first reading of Policy 9270, Home Education. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this policy has to do with our students that are educated at home. And the policy allows students that are in ninth through 12th grade to enroll in Carmel High School for up to two courses, up to four credits per year at Carmel High School. The policy refers to J. Everett Light, where students would be allowed to enroll in J. Everett Light on a part-time basis. We no longer partner with J. Everett Light for our CTE programming. We do that with the Pursuit Institute here in Hamilton County. And so our students that can still do career pathways through Carmel High School that are home-educated as well by enrolling in those courses, but it would not be at J. Everett Light. So this policy just takes out the reference to J. Everett Light.
Any questions? Greg?
Yeah, just maybe not a question about that specific change, but I notice it has a provision to not allow the homeschoolers to participate in co-curricular or extracurricular activities. Does that mean that they aren't able to attend any events or sports? Is that how I would read that?
That would mean that they could not participate. So they would not be on the football team. They would not be a participant on the team. They could still attend different events.
Are there any restrictions on classes? Or are they pretty well open to take whatever classes they wish?
The restriction is just up to two courses for credits per year.
Okay. So like two courses a semester or two courses the whole year?
It would be two courses for the whole year, up to four credits.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. And this will come back up as an action item at our next meeting?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have reports. We will begin with the Staff and Student Services Report. Dr. Ostrom.
Good evening, President Koke, members of the Board, Dr. Bearsford. Happy to be here tonight to present a Human Resources update. We're going to talk a little hiring from this summer to share with you, both on the classified side and also regarding our teachers. And so first, I'd like to report that we had a very successful CCS Support Staff Job Fair that was held on July 9. We had 66 people that signed in and attended and were interviewed on the spot for a variety of positions, including our edutcare- and were interviewed on the spot for a variety of positions, including our edicare workers, food service, instructional assistants, bus drivers, custodians, and substitute teachers. And I would like to say thank you to our HR staff, Dr. Herrera, for all of her work, and also our schools. We had representatives from every single school there, including all of the positions and divisions that I just shared with you. And so it went off very, very well. And to share some data with you from the night. So this is the fourth time we've held our CCS Support Staff Job Fair. And so we started back in January of 2023. We had 55 people attend that looking for a job. And then, as you can see, 62, 75 this past January. And so this July, we had 66 candidates. Of those 66 candidates, up until this point, we've hired, and they are in our schools right now, 29 of those candidates. And so that's a 44% higher rate, and that's fairly impressive for a job fair. A lot of times, you hold job fairs, and you may only hire a couple people. But the reason for that high percentage that we've been hiring is because of the partnership we have with technology, that we have all of our buildings there. Because when they come and they interview, once they found a position that they are very interested in, we don't let them leave until they apply online. And so we have a bank of computers that are there. And we have a member, Becky Barker, thank you if you're listening, from our technology staff that works with them and gets their application online right away. We also have different, we have Spanish speakers there so that they can help translate for if people have questions or are interested that don't speak English. And speaking of that, we've seen an increase of our candidates where English is their second language. And so we feel that by having a translator at the event, that's helped us. And especially where we've seen this is in our food service and child nutrition. Also want to thank technology because they've provided us with translators on the spot that they're able to wear around their neck. We also have Google Translate that we use. And so we're able to hire outstanding candidates to work with us who may not speak English very well, but they can do a phenomenal job, and we're very pleased with that. We're also examining future opportunities where we can support our employees who don't speak English as their first language. And so we're looking at providing different opportunities for them, maybe exploring some partnerships in the community through local churches, through local organizations, adult education that we can partner with, and we can help support the Spanish speakers and other language speakers in our community. So I'm very excited about those opportunities moving forward. All right, so our biggest need right now is we have nine positions open as of today, as of right now, where we are in need of special education instructional assistance, and especially in our emotional disability classrooms and our life skills classrooms. And so overall, we also need building-level instructional assistance as well. I believe we have 16 positions that are open right now. And so if anyone's listening, please apply today. We're really still looking for our instructional assistant positions with regards to our classified and our support staff. Moving forward to teachers, there's Barbara Glenask, our Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. She was also named a Top 25 Teacher of the Year in the state of Indiana, so we are very proud of her. But we had a very successful summer hiring teachers here in Carmel. There is a teacher shortage, and it is affecting our district in certain subjects, especially right now, speech-language pathologists and also special education teachers. That's where we see the biggest need and the highest demand at this time. I do want to say, when we're talking about teachers, we're talking about media specialists. We're talking about social workers, speech-language pathologists, school counselors, intense behavior therapists. They're all included in our teacher data that I'm going to share with you momentarily. Very pleased to report that all certified teaching positions are filled in Carmel Clay Schools. And not every school district across the state of Indiana can say that. So we work very hard. I appreciate our principals for their work. And I'm going to share some data with you next that I don't know of many districts that would share this data with you because in some districts, it doesn't look great. And I'm going to share with you right now our teacher hiring data, all the way from 2018, 19 school year to up until current. And so if you take a look, that we've averaged per year from this timeframe, as you can see up on the chart, 55 teachers that we've hired due to resignations, 19 due to retirements, and then overall 74. As you can see, pre-pandemic, our numbers were in the total of the 58, 64. And this is out of approximately 1,100 teachers, social workers, school counselors, media specialists, speech-language pathologists. They're all considered teachers. I put them together because they're part of the bargaining unit. And so as you can see, we had a little bit of an uptick after the pandemic, as many different areas and businesses did across the nation. But as you can see, this past year, we're coming back down to those pre-pandemic numbers. And as you can see, we're below that 5% average for this past hiring year in our resignations and our retirements. And we had a total of 69 teachers and all of those other groups that we hired for this school year. So I'm very pleased that we are coming back down with our hiring. You've heard Rogers speak about, Mr. McMichael, speak about some of those pieces that keep our teachers here. And I can't say enough about our Health and Wellness Center that we have and that everything that goes along with it, and the fitness classes and yoga and our spin studio and all of that. We're very pleased with that. That's one of it, but the great benefits we have as well, and the great climate and culture that we do have with our teachers and our staff in all of our buildings. So I'm very pleased to share this data with you this evening. And then finally, we pride ourselves on bringing back our Carmel High School graduates to teach in the district. This year, out of that 69 number, we had nine teachers that we hired that were Carmel High School graduates. And so if any of you sitting before me right now, I see about 12 students out there. If you go into teaching, we want to bring you back home, and we want you to come teach here with Carmel Clay Schools. So we would love to have you. If you're in your teaching class, cadet teaching class, I come and speak with you every year, so I look forward. So if any of you are out there in there or anyone listening tonight, we look forward to bringing our Carmel High School graduates back home with us. So that concludes tonight's board update on teacher hiring and human resources. And at this time, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Katie?
Can you go back to the data slide? Can you tell us, so we see the resignation, retirements, but can you tell us, I know you can't go all the way back, but how many total staff do we have?
So approximately 1,100. When we talk about our teachers and all those positions that I spoke about. So you're looking at 49 teachers this past year. That's about 4.5% turnover with resignations, then about 1.7% turnover with retirements. So we were, add that up together, we're below the 7%. So.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Louise?
Thank you for this report. I really appreciate that. Some of the thoughts that came to mind was, could you maybe speak to the efforts of our Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer? Because I didn't really hear any highlights, and I know she's been really impactful in being able to recruit teachers or educators who speak other languages. And I'd love to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So Mrs. Roberts, Leonard, and I have been all across the state of Indiana together. We start the year off at IU, School of Education, down in Bloomington, and they have a student teaching recruitment fair. So she comes to that with me, and she's been all over the state and beyond in the past school year and every year that she's been with us. I'm pleased to report that of our 69 new teachers, certified staff members, that 12% come from a diverse racial background. That's a number that has been growing. I'm very proud of that number. Certainly, it can be increased, but that's a similar number that I would hire in my previous school district, which was a much more diverse school district. So we are increasing our efforts in hiring diverse teachers and staff members, and we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It feels like it's been a minute since we've heard from Terry. I think it'd be good to have her come and just share an update, share some progress, share some things that are strategic initiatives. I think that'd be great.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yep, just a quick question. We have, you said about 1,100 teachers. Who would you include in that number? When we say teachers, is it just teachers like the head of the room, the class we're talking about? Or is it days or substitutes?
No, instructional assistants aren't a part of that number. Substitute teachers aren't a part of that number. Long-term teachers, short-term teachers, and you know, in case someone goes on a maternity leave or something like that, not a part of that number.
Okay, so it's a classical teacher that we would think of, I would think of.
A certified teacher that comes every day and is in front of our students, and a teacher that would be on the schedule when the students get their schedules online now. That's what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Our next report is from Mr. McMichael with the monthly financial update.
Usually need a little help from my friends here. Yeah, that's right. No students, they, no students, they'd make me look really bad. Okay, so we're, let's see which screen I'm on here. So we'll start with our Education Fund and Referendum Fund, and also Rainy Day Fund. As you know, we combine those three because the operating fund and the education fund are both used primarily for teachers' salary and benefits. And our Rainy Day Fund is a fund that we add to that. It's more accumulated reserves, really. And so we include those together. I'll begin by noting that we're at the end of July, so that's actually the first month of our next fiscal year. So things get a little confusing because our budget's on a counter year, but the state funds our education fund on a fiscal year. And so we're particularly interested in where we end up at the end of that, which is June 30. And then we also take a close look at December 31 as well. So in 20, this year, our balance is 16.9 million. And if you compare that to 2023, we were at 12 million. And so while it seemed, I mean, while it's significantly increased over last year, last year, we transferred $2.5 million into the Rainy Day Fund at the end of the year. So you kind of need to add that to get a comparison that wouldn't be misleading. And then secondly, you may remember, it's been over a year ago, really, but in our salary increases, we actually, starting with our Teachers Association, we gave a 3% raise in the first year and a 2% in the second year for teachers. And we actually held money back in the first year. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to give our employees even a 1% raise for our non-teachers. And so that, but that's also increasing the balance at this time. And then what will happen, and it was about over a million dollars. And so, because the way the funding worked, we got significantly more funding in the first year, but very little in the second year. And so that was the consensus as to our agreement, starting with our Teachers Association. And then, so what will happen is, is that we'll start to spend that million dollars in the second year, and that'll kind of get us back to even, if you will. And so, but that's also reflecting in this. So when you factor those things out, we're right on target where we would expect to be. We're a little higher in cash, but we have to be because we maintain our reserves on a percentage basis. And as you know, we want to get to a minimum of a 12% balance. And we're not there yet, but we have made progress toward that. And so as the budget grows, the dollars grow in order to maintain or increase the percentage. And then going to our operating fund, we're at 4.3 million, almost 4.4 million for this year. And it happens that last year, we were about the same. This fund's not nearly as predictable because it does not have nearly the percentage of salaries and benefits, which are much more predictable. But this also includes bus maintenance and bus purchases and significantly facility maintenance. And so that's, you know, the expenditures out of those accounts are not even every two weeks like payroll is. And so, but we're right at where we would project to be. And this fund is very good shape. And then finally, the Rainy Day Fund here, you don't see much activity as by design. We, our balance is maintaining at 4.5, almost 4.6 million. And then you can see here, as I alluded to earlier, we transferred 2.5 million dollars from the Operations Fund to the Rainy Day Fund as a part of the plan to build our reserves a little bit. And with that, I'll respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. McMichael, any questions? Greg?
Probably answered this when you said there's more variability in the operating ones. Notice that the purchase services is the only one that seems to be drawn down more than we might expect at this time. And I just wanted to see if you're comfortable with where we're sitting on that particular line item? Operations Fund, yeah.
Yes, as you can see from the expenditures, they're fairly consistent. But that includes everything from bus replacement, for example. And so we spent about 2.5 million dollars on buses. So depending, using that as an example, depending on when they're delivered and therefore paid for, you can see that the month that they're paid for, and they may not all come at the same time even, but as those, that's an example of a purchase that, when it's made, it'll have, you know, a noticeable change in the balance on the expenditure side, depending on the month that something like that was paid. And also, we have contracts, service contracts, for example, and some of them are paid by the quarter. Some of them are paid in advance, like a year at a time, and depending on the size. So those are the kind of variables that will cause that line item. As compared to salaries, it has potential to vary more than others. So that's a good example that kind of reflects what my comments on the entire fund.
Yeah, there's just, we have five months to go, and it just seems like it's tighter than the other line items. So, but if you're comfortable with it, if we do overrun that, what, how do we adjust for that?
Well, we're focused first on the entire fund. So, and we, you may remember in December and then January, we do what we kind of call the pea and shell game, where we cannot have an account in the negative when we close out the year. So, and remember, these budgets are billed 18 months ahead of time. And so things happen, and good or bad, as far as expenses. And so we start by certainly focusing on the entire fund. So if an account runs short, so long as there's total funds available, we're typically doing, it's really an appropriation transfer, which is just giving us authority to spend the money. So then we'll increase the appropriation if account gets low and it's transferred from an account that presumably has additional appropriation that's available. And again, so long as we're not short on the entire fund. If we were short on the, and we're talking about the budget. So earlier, the board had approved this budget, which doesn't reflect, that's where the reserves come in. Because the budget, what we have available to us as far as cash, we have cash to fund the budget, but then we also have that reserve that, as I said in the other example, is about 12%. And so we've not found ourselves in a situation where we're literally going to run out of money. We typically, more often than not, we're managing the finances in such a way that we don't. than not, we're managing the finances in such a way that we don't even deficit spend in a particular year, let alone the entire fund. And so, and again, we're talking about millions of dollars, so it can vary a little bit from one year to the next. But it does not vary drastically unless that was by design and there was some specific reason.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. McMichael.
Thanks.
Our next report is a board member report. Mrs. Jackson has a board member report for when she attended the 2024 Indiana School Boards Association Annual Conference. Mrs. Jackson?
Thank you. So I don't know if everybody knows, but the National School Board Association holds a conference every year, and generally, some school board members try to attend so we can learn more about what is best in class, what's coming out, what are some of the challenges other board members and administrative teams are facing, and partner together on solutions and optimal paths forward. So I'm just going to highlight some of my favorite sessions that I went through. One was Ruby Bridges. She did the keynote for the event. Most of you all know Ruby Bridges is one of our pillars on the civil rights movement, who faced segregation challenges when she was young, and we were trying to assimilate schools. So she was there and was a keynote speaker. And so one of the things that I thought was extremely enlightening and hopeful for me was, they kicked off her introduction, they, the NSBA, kicked off her introduction with an apology for being on the wrong side, I'm quoting them, "the wrong side of history," and originally in support of separate but equal ideology. And so I thought that it was really notable that these organizations feel like, you know, we're not too good, we're not too old of an organization to say, "We made a wrong move." And so I think that should speak volumes to all of us. And then the new executive director, I believe, is a black woman, and I believe she's touted as the first black woman in the executive team. So I wanted to celebrate that. And there are a number of other things that Ruby shared. You can go and check out some of her resources online. I believe she has a new book. The next session that was very interesting to me was one on dealing with tough conversations. So there's something called the Better Arguments Project Out, where they've made, their focus being how to bring people who have opposing views together to have tough conversations. So even with our students coming out and sharing their perspective, thank you, I appreciate that. I have two children, one's a sophomore and the sophomore in high school, the other is a sophomore in college, and I have raised them to be very outspoken. I guess I can't, I guess I could call one a kid, the other is an adult, but outspoken members of the community and in my house. And I wasn't raised to allow that, but I, we've done that with my kids. And so, you know, just seeing you guys out here, I was really appreciative of you being able to have your perspective and share it today very, very articulately. So this project, the Better Arguments Project, is by the Braver, or the Braver Angels Organization. In this session, they brought people together in kind of like round tables and gave them an opportunity to talk about some of the challenges we're having as board members or administrators in schools. And so, of course, conversations about books, about policies, about a number of challenges came to the forefront. And so they shared a approach to deal with some of these challenges. And they gave us the acronym of LAPP, L-A-P-P. This is four skills for a productive conversation. The first, L, is listen. Listen as if there were going to be a test afterwards. So when someone's sharing an opposing view, listen as if there's going to be a test afterwards. And listen so you can restate the perspective that's been shared. And if there is something you agree with, take note of that, too. So don't just focus, like a lot of us will focus on where we disagree. Take note of where you agree. That's L. A is acknowledge. That is paraphrase what you heard being said, so that the other person knows that you really did hear what it was they're saying, and you believe that what they're saying to be of value. Even if you have strong feelings, because I know I can sometimes want to turn my ears off when that's the case. P. P is the word pivot. Now, that means getting permission to progress the conversation when it's spinning and not going anywhere, right? You ask the person, hey, okay, is it okay if we progress to this next stage to just make sure that we cover all the pieces that we want to cover? The last P is perspective. This is how, this is creating clarity in how the other person sees it versus how I see it, to make sure that at the end of the day, when you wrap up that conversation, the other person knows that you wanted the other person, you wanted them to feel heard, and you wanted them to hear you. So that's one of the acronyms that I just wanted to share. It's, you know, kind of a quick and dirty thing that you can just pull out as you have contentious conversations. There's a lot of other tools that they share that I can provide. But as we continue to navigate the remainder of the school year and with an election coming up, I think it's really important that we, as, you know, a team and as the community, we're able to have these conversations that can be, I don't know, challenging, difficult, and we have these varying perspectives, but do it in a way where everybody feels like they're valued. So I hope you take some of that with you. The last session that I'm going to highlight was one that was about social media and how it impacts youth's mental health. And maybe I'll get some daggers, I don't know, from students out here. But I thought it was an awesome session, because they kicked it off with a young lady by the name of Keegan Lee. If you go online and look her up, she did a 60-day, kind of like cold turkey situation from her device and social media. And she walks us through the impacts that that made. And I just thought that it was really refreshing to see not adults talking to other, talking to students and telling them what they should and should not do, but someone who was young that said, you know what, I hear people saying what they're saying, but let me try it. And so she shared how not having a device and not looking at social media for 60 days positively impacted her life, and how she's now made it a platform for her to encourage other young people to take the same leap. And of course, you'll go back to using your device, but maybe go back with a different perspective of what healthy utilization looks like. So I continue to think about that for myself. I know I just lectured my son today. When he walked in the house, I was looking at his phone. I was like, boy, if you don't put that device up. But just think about how you can leverage such a tool that gives you access to so much in a way that's beneficial for you, for all of us. So those are just a couple points that I got from the session. Happy to give you more insight if you want it. Questions?
Any questions? Greg?
Just a comment. That was a, that was a lot of really useful information in a very short period of time, and I appreciate you sharing that. And maybe I'll try the social media thing myself and see how well that goes. Ask me in 60 days and see how I feel about it. Thanks a lot. That was very good.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome. Anybody want to disagree, so I can try LAP? I'm ready. Come at me. Okay.
I think we could try that at some future board meetings. Or past. No, thank you. That sounded really great. I thank you for giving us that wrap-up. It sounds like an amazing event you got to go to. Thank you. Our next report is Dr. Beresford, the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you very much. First, I would like to share tonight, I'm representing the Clay Trojan Nation here with my quarter zip, and I want to do a shout out to Principal Todd Crosby, Assistant Principals Mark Smith, Catherine Gaul, and AD John Cochran. They're an awesome team, and I'm going to try to make this a thing, where I do a shout out. And unfortunately, it was probably not a great time with Carmel Middle School getting like all the awards for music tonight, which was amazing. But we're going to, they'll get their time in the sun. So we'll see about that in the future. Which was that, that music award, the criteria for that is just insanely hard to do. So very big congratulations to them. Secondly, I want to just do a shout out to our fall sports teams, opening competition. I was able to see the boys tennis team beat HSE, and then I went to the home, first home football game on Friday night. The student theme was USA. And so we had a lot of patriotism going on. And there was one student in the front row had the white wig and looked like kind of a George Washington thing. I mean, it was like probably the biggest, best costume I've ever seen. I thought I was going to Hamilton, you know, to see the play. But yeah, it was fantastic, you know, victory over Homestead. And then prior to the game, Principal Ferris and Athletic Director Jim Enske announced the coaches of the year. The coaches at Carmel High School all vote for one another for the coach of the year and the assistant coach of the year. And, you know, the presentation was a special one because the head, the head coach of the year award is now named for the late Jack Meacham. And he was our lacrosse coach, and he passed away in a tragic accident last year. And, you know, he often would tell our athletes, it's a great day to have a great day. And that's kind of a resonating thing about that. So the head coach of the year for this year was our Boys and Girls Swimming Coach and Team USA Olympic Assistant Coach, Chris Plumb. And Chris, of course, we've heard about that a lot with having some greyhounds in the Olympics. But also, on the other, you know, he has led the Greyhound Girls to Boys and, Boys and Girls Swimming and Diving State Championship 2024. He also leads all state coaches in the, you know, in the history of athletics in Indiana with 32 total state titles as a head coach. So congratulations to Coach Plumb. Julie Foz was our Assistant Coach of the Year for her work with our girls soccer team. She just completed her 30th year with the soccer program, the girls soccer program. And I don't know, I mean, you talk about a person who has a positive influence on a group of girls. I don't know what the number, what kind of number that is, 30 years of coaching, but I just know it's a big number, and that she's had a big positive influence on our students and our student athletes. Member of nine state championship teams and two national championship teams. So congratulations to Julie and Chris. And then finally, in the student section, there was an Olympian who was with us, and she was recognized during the game. And Alex Shackle, Shackle, excuse me, Alex Shackle was honored. And yes, she had her gold and silver medal with her. And the crowd gave her, you know, a big ovation, that sort of thing. I will say that personally, Alex came over and walked up right next to me, and I stood like right next to her with her gold medal and her silver medal. And well, technically, she came over to see my dog, Jim Dandy, who was at the game. But I was standing right next to Jim Dandy, who was standing right next to the Olympian, you know. And so I felt pretty awesome about that. But it is pretty amazing when you think you guys have an Olympian walking around in the halls. But she's been real nice to, you know, share that, share that moment with us. All teams are in action, you know, and I just say, keep working hard and good things will happen. I wanted to send a message out to the community that, just a reminder, Current Publishing will be presenting a debate between the Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees candidates at 7:00 PM on September the 30th at the Palladium. And also, I encourage all community members not only to vote, but be informed voters. But community members can also submit questions or issues to be considered for the debate by emailing news@currentincarmel.com. So it's kind of cool that the, this, the community can actually have input on what the topics and what questions will be asked that night. So encourage everybody to do that. And then finally, I've got the bell ringer. And so the bell rings is a little different, because I've mentioned before that my theme of the year this year is to love where you lead. And I have to say it again, that I really love, I love this team. And each member is really, really important, and the collaboration between everyone on the team is what makes the magic happen for our students. And so anyhow, I don't often single out our great leaders, but tonight's an exception, because I'm giving this guy. And hang on just a second, because it's going to show up in a minute here. There it is. That is this guy, right here. Mr. McMichael. So I'm giving Mr. McMichael a shout out tonight as my bell ringer, because that is him jumping from a plane. And not only does he keep our finances, our facilities, our food service, and transportation all effectively and efficiently humming, but he's also the only guy I know over 80 years old who jumps out of a plane like two miles. It's two miles up in the air above the surface of the earth. And, you know, and he just jumped right out, and he landed safely. And so the only other person I know, but I don't really know them, is, you know, George Bush Senior, I think, did a skydive on his 90th birthday. So he took the plunge on his 90th birthday. But I would not be surprised to see Roger McMichael beat that record. So congratulations and a shout out to Roger on, you know, not only what you do here, but also for being that guy.
Real quick, Dr. B, as the head of human resources, I want to let you know that he is not over 80 years old yet. So I just wanted to share that piece. And that picture was from yesterday, by the way. That was yesterday.
He's close enough, but I want to tell you, I wasn't red-faced when I jumped out of the plane, but I kind of am tonight.
That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beresford. That was really yesterday? Oh, my, okay.
Yesterday. Do a clap.
All right.
I do it every five years, but I'm considering my age. I'm considering moving that up a little bit, just in case. Just saying. And if I'd like to go, or if you think this would be an alternative to the year-end retreat at Topgolf, it'd be great.
She didn't, he didn't say board retreat. He just said, all right. We have a couple announcements about our upcoming meetings and holidays. Next Monday, September 2nd is Labor Day. No school, yay. Schools, the schools and offices are closed. Our next meeting is September 9th. We have our school board workshop session. Our second meeting in September is on a, in a different day due to some scheduling conflicts. It'll be on Wednesday, September 25th, still at 6:00 PM. And then the other no-school times that you can all cheer for will be the fall break, October 7th through 11th. And we'll continue that, that full week we get. And then October 15th, after that, is our next school board workshop session. I think that is it for tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn? Katie? Greg, thank you for a second. Meeting adjourned.